We'll start with you, Mr. Francis.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Francis. I'm running for reelection to the Haywood County Board of Education Chair. I've served the last 12 years as the General Chair and am seeking reelection at this time. Thank you so much for your support.
Mr. Francis.
Hey, thank you guys for being here. I'm Craig Francis. I am a 26-year-old graduate from the hospital and I'm running for chairman and I hope you will vote for me.
Thank you. The first question goes to you, Chuck Francis. Why are you running? Is there a term?
I think the reason you serve in a public role is because you can think of how you can help children in this county to excel in the classroom and how can we best achieve that. Our school board is really more difficult to move our students up the scale. When I took office 12 years ago, Haywood County ranked 40th in the state. If you haven't seen the newspaper or heard of the newspaper, it would just turn me into a lab in the state. We're very proud of that accomplishment and that was done by hard work and the love of our administration and our teachers especially, our parents, our community. You would believe we support this movement in our county school system and we appreciate everyone working together toward the common goal and that goes to excellence in the classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
Same question.
Same question.
I'm running for school board because I feel it's our duty to step up. Being a younger person, sometimes you have to step up and fill that void if you see a void. The main thing that got me with the closing of the council, I feel like our community doesn't trust what's going on all the time and I want to ensure that we never have something like that happen again to our families or our students. I ran before 2014 and I just had a desire to serve, I have a desire to help our community and help our people achieve what they can achieve and that's the best I can do.
Thank you. And the next question goes to you first, Mr. Francis. Describe the leadership qualities that will serve you well if you are elected to this position.
I feel like I'm a personal person. I feel like I can relate. Being 26, like I said, I feel like I can get into the school and the students might be able to relate to me better. I feel like they have my little voice. And I've had leadership roles. I've taught Sunday School and Church. I'm currently teaching our young adult class in Sunday Nines and I look for those opportunities for that and this is another chance that I see.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
I think leadership roles are important on the school board. It's been a big consensus bill and that takes some experience with working with people and different personalities. Even though an eight-member board and the chair only votes in case of a tie, that carries a lot of responsibility because I want to build a consensus with eight different personalities. In my experience over the past 12 years has been to mostly not having to vote, to be honest with you. I think I voted three or four times in the last 12 years and that tells me that our board is working together. We air our differences. We do have a discussion in our board meeting and I feel that we have a good, honest discussion on all the issues that we face. We've faced some very tough issues lately and I think our board's working well together to work through those issues. As far as me personally, leadership roles, I have various state offices. I served as the High School Association President in 2008 and that was great work in the state.
Thank you. And the third question goes to you, Chuck Francis. State decisions have directed education funding to areas such as public charter schools, school vouchers, or online instruction. Is this a direction you support?
No, it is not. Not at all. My belief is, is that if we have a public school system, that we need to support that and work with traditional public schools. Now originally, North Carolina had a cap of 100 charter schools and the direction of the legislature to use the charter schools set up a system to look at experimentation and look at things that will work in charter schools. And then if those instances work, it worked around the traditional schools. And so far, I've not seen a lot of evidence of that being the case. I think what's happened is now we're trying to create not one, not two, but three or four state school systems. And is that the best way to spin the tax money? In my opinion, it is not.
Mr. Francis.
Regardless of how I feel or the chairman feels about this, it's a state issue. The state has said we're going to have charter schools, we're going to have them. My goal is to make our schools a public school the best they can possibly be and incorporate everything that people are looking for. If we make our schools the best they can be, people are not going to walk together charter schools. So if we need to achieve that level of success, can charter schools not be an issue?
Thank you. The fourth question goes to you, Mr. Francis. Do you believe additional funding is needed within the school system? If so, where should it come from and where should it go to?
Yes, I definitely think so. We're underfunded. That's just the facts. We get the money from Raleigh and it's spent where it needs to be spent currently. I feel that we need to press at local level to get more of the funding back into our school system. We're building a $3 million pound when that money can be going for our teachers or for our students or wherever it may be. But I think we need a better stopper for our teachers and keep our teachers here.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, Chair Francis.
Would you please repeat the question?
Do you believe additional funding is needed within the school system? If so, where should it come from and where should it go to?
The answer is of course yes. I remember back pre-2008 that we felt like we were on tight ladders and in retrospect, it was, we had a lot more money than we have today to work with, with our students, with our faculty, with our administration. I think the biggest shortfall currently is not so much at the local level, but at the state level. If you look back at 2008, 2009, we were getting $4,961.70 per student. That's excluding EC schools. In 2016, 2017, we got $5,092.27 for each child in Haywood County Schools from the state, again excluding exception on children. That's an increase of $130.57. That's a 3% increase over that same time. The county in the same timeframe has increased their funding somewhere between 10 and 12% on an ATM basis, not counting the capital balance.
Thank you. We'll start with the two minute closing. Chair Francis, can you go first?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Mountaineer for having us here this evening and having this opportunity to share our views with our constituents. I've enjoyed working with Haywood County Schools. I enjoy being on Haywood County School Board. It's been tough for other times. I mean, honestly, all the way from floods, we had to rebuild a lot of our schools and I have to sit down with senior representatives and try to work through some of the very tough decisions that have been made. Where's the money coming from? It's been a learning experience. It's been a journey and our current administration has been very supportive of our teachers, our staff. We have many issues that need to be answered and I look forward, if you will grace me with your vote, to continue the work that we've started and we'll move that scale on up with your help and support. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
I'd say we'd like to thank the Mountaineer and everyone out here in this county. You clearly came here and that's a great thing to see. I asked for you to vote and my opponent has been up there 12 years and that's great and he's a great candidate. I'm not trying to say that he's not in any way and that's not what I'm running about. And if he wins, I'll support them and I hope that they continue to grow. Like I say, obviously I've done from 40 to 11. That's awesome. But sometimes I feel like it's time for other people to step up and I'm putting myself out there and trying to do that. I want to be a voice for you, a voice for your kids, a voice for our families and I hope on the break they will consider me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a hand. Hey, this is your candidate slate for the Waynesville District for the Haywood County Board of Education. And whenever you vote, whether it's early, starting October 20th or on election day November 8th, you will get to choose two. So as you listen to the answers, you can make the powerful choices. And we will start with introductions with Ms. Barrett.
I've been on the board for this way and I'm in Haywood County. Thank you so much for kids with special needs and I hate to hear all the special needs in the school system. I think all of our children are in Haywood County regardless of whether special needs or any other way should be on the paid education. That's what I'd like to do.
Ms. Benhart.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Benhart and I'm an advocate for hardworking teachers and students in Haywood County. And everybody says I don't talk out loud, so if you can't hear me, then just wait here. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Francis.
I sort of feel like I'm on the out front or show you there. One lucky guy. My name is Jim Riley Francis. I'm one of your school board members in the Waynesville District. I want to thank the Mountaineer and you for having us. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the people of Haywood County for letting me serve for the last five years of my school.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
I'm Pam Martin and I want to be on the school board because I want to be an advocate first and foremost for our students and I also want advancement for them and also teacher retention.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Hello, I'm Kaye Miller. I'm originally from Greenville, South Carolina and I've lived in Haywood County for over 12 and a half years. I'm married to Richard Miller and have a stepson, Andy Miller. I'm a small business owner in downtown Waynesville and a member of New Covenant Church in Clyde.
Thank you. The first question will go to you, Ms. Barrett. What steps have you taken to learn about school related issues in preparing for this position?
Well, I kind of am still friends with some of the people on the school board, so I kind of know what's going on. I would like to be able to see better pay for our teachers and I think all of our students, you know, treat everyone fairly and but we are falling down in a few areas and I hope to see us to come back and help them.
Thank you. Ms. Benhart.
Questioning.
What steps have you taken to learn about school related issues in preparing for this position?
Well, I've attended school board meetings, more sessions, and I watch many, many hours on YouTube and I'm with the Mountaineer and just study the whole system and this thing school system as well and how to get our money from them and help.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
Preparing for being on the school board, I think it takes, you know, you need to look at a lot of different things as well with communities. Keep up with legislative updates, attend a bunch of school board meetings, or all the school board meetings. And we do have district meetings that we attend. We visit schools and keeping up with the local news and what's going on. So there's lots of things to take into account.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
I have been visiting the schools, basically asking the teachers things that they would like to see improvement on or what is going well for them, what's not. I keep up with the paper and the news and just like everyone else, I think you hear a lot of talk and so you want to go and research and make sure that that's true or that's not true.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Well, I've met twice with Dr. Garrett, Dr. Dolte, and the financial person at the school, Ms. Gardner, and that's very, very helpful to me and I appreciate that. I also have met with a lot of folks. In this book are meetings with numerous teachers, principals, some parents, and I have tried to listen and get from those meetings what are the issues facing the folks that are in our school system. Primarily, the teachers is what I heard. A lot of feedback from the teachers on things that they would like to see different.
Thank you. The next question will start with you, Ms. Benhart. What new ideas will you bring to the table if elected?
Well, I have, I'm an idea person. I have a lot of ideas, but one of my important ones right now would be seatbelts. Our children are our future. The state law says if you rent a car, you must have a seatbelt. Students deserve the same protection. We need seatbelts on buses. On his first day of school, my grandson came home and said, "Miss Debbie, the bus driver, is going to get a ticket." And I thought, "Oh my goodness, what did she do?" And he said, I said, "Why wouldn't Miss Debbie get a ticket?" And he said, "Because we didn't have a seatbelt." So these little children know, you get them hotter because of the seatbelt. So we need that protection for our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
The ideas that I'd like to see brought to the school board, we need to be more creative in our budgeting. We've been faced with a lot of budget cuts and so we need to look at ways we can spread the money. I know they had a cut back in civil programs as far as coaching goes and other extracurricular activities. And our kids really need those activities to really thrive and be good students as well. And so we need ways to maybe put that money back in as well as also looking at being more creative and funding out of our teachers. The supplement is a big issue that we need to work on and it's something that I would definitely like to see us improve so we can be more competitive with the other county departments.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Teacher retention is a big thing. Lots of talk about that and I'm along with Jim. I think that we need ways to keep our teachers. We grow up with lots of great teachers and they often leave us because of the supplements. So I think that that's a big thing. And also student advancement, making sure students are on grade level when they leave out of a grade and making sure that the teachers have that education to cause those kids to be on grade level.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Well, with talking to so many teachers preparing for this campaign, the teacher morale was also something that came to the forefront. And I feel like if we can do a few things to make our teachers feel more valued, respected for their hard work. I mean, we're in the top 10% in the state and that's remarkable and a lot of hard work has been put forth to achieve that. But the teachers do want to stay here and they want to teach in the community where they live and they don't want to add hours to the commute every day. They want to have a voice and they would like to have their ideas considered for the school improvement plans by the school improvement teams. And I also think that, I know that the teachers that have left are given an online survey and not all of them complete that online survey. So I thought that maybe in-person exit interviews might be something that could add.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett.
Well, I agree with Mr. Francis too that we're losing good teachers because of the pay that we can get in other counties. And I would like to see that we keep our teachers because Haywood County does have its school system, but we keep losing good teachers. So we need to work hard and try to grab a way that we can budget our money for our teachers. Also make sure that we can budget the money where the kids can do extra grade activities because somewhere in the month, that's probably going to, if we don't work hard to keep that going, the kids will lose out and they can play sports and everything, which I think is good for them. And I think our kids in our county should be able to do that. Also, I would like to see our, you know, county grow and as it is growing, we need more, you know, top educational students.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, the third question will start with you. North Carolina schools are in the bottom fifth for per people funding and teacher pay, but state contributions to K12 education are 10th in the nation, which indicates the shortfall is at the local level. Would you advocate for a tax increase locally to help bring North Carolina schools toward the national average?
I would love to see more money come to schools. As far as when you start talking about a local tax increase, that's something that really needs to be thought about and discussed because if the guarantee of that money coming into the school system is there, then, you know, I'd love to see the money come in. But sometimes when we have those tax increases, not all, you know, there's a tax increase levy and sometimes that money is filtered into other pots other than coming into the school system. So if there was a guarantee of that money coming into schools for the needs that we didn't have, then that is a strong possibility of looking at. But we do need more funding and, you know, we are working, we're setting up a committee to, with the county commissioners on looking at the supplement like I mentioned earlier. And that may be a possibility that we'd look at is it may come down to having to get some type of a tax increase to tick off the teacher pay for something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
I think every time we have a tax increase, I know as a business owner, small business owner, we are taxed to death. That's all we do is pay taxes. And so I think that if people in our county knew that the tax would go to help our teachers, if it would go to help our students, if it would go to help what is in the school system, they might be more open to a tax. But there again, you know, you just have to outweigh it whenever it comes to you and just, you know, you have to pray about it and you have to make sure that that's really, you know, the intent and really what they're going to use it for.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
North Carolina schools are in the bottom fifth for per people funding and teacher pay, but state contributions to K12 education are 10th in the nation. Would you support or advocate for a local tax increase to make up that shortfall?
Well, I agree with a couple of my neighbors here that in general, folks are not happy when they hear that word tax. But we do need to do something. Our teachers are not being paid enough and they're doing a lot with very little. If you're number 11 in the whole state and your pay is well beneath even adjoining counties, then that's really where the focus needs to be. I'm really encouraged that the committee's been put together that's going to look at teacher pay and I hope that they're going to come up with some creative solutions. I know that we can work together as a community to come up with some creative solutions to the gap in teacher pay. And so I hope that I will be a part of that on the school board.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett.
And I have to agree with Chris. I think we need to figure out a way that we can pay our teachers more. It's to, you know, let them get another tax or whatever. Citizens of Haywood County, to get their children the best education that they can get them, we'd be glad to pay them more, keep good quality teachers in our county and not lose them to other counties, which we've done in the past. I know as a parent, if I had a child in another school, I would be willing to pay them more taxes if I had to, to keep our kids in the best quality schools that we could keep them in, to keep our teachers instead of losing somebody that went to other counties.
Thank you. Ms. Benhart.
Well, after eight years, Haywood County has had no increase in their teacher supplement, but it's 4.5% to 5% while Haywood County had 8.5% to 16%. So whatever it takes, I know we've established a committee to work on it, but they didn't get the animal shelter by committee. The only way to get an increase is to pressure the county commission. The animal shelter people did this and were successful. If Haywood County has millions for an ant for the dogs and cats, they have millions for the children.
Thank you. And the last question of this round goes to Ms. Martin. If elected, what would be the first reactions you would take as a school board member?
Well, being a person that was raised in Maggie Valley, I know what it's like to go through closing another school. When I was in fifth grade, I had to be bused to June Leska School, which was the second year June Leska was open. So I know how that feels like. I know how it feels like to be in a class or in a school with 150, 200 kids and then you're trapped, you're just bum-fuzzled all into a school of about 500 or 600 kids. So I know how that feels. So my first three things that I would do is I would, I want to see, I want to see teacher retention. I want to see that more than anything. And then I want to make sure that our students are advancing and being creative and doing the best that they can be. And I also want to look into vocational programs. I was, I graduated through a vocational program when I was at Tuscola. I took cosmetology for three years and when I graduated, I had enough credit hours that I went straight and got my certificate and I started working. And I've been in a salon for 33 years. I've been a salon owner for 27 years. I've been a Redken educator. I've done student teaching. I have a teaching certificate. So I am a leader and I know how that's done. But I think we need more vocational things in our high schools so that our kids can graduate with a work, with a work placement that they can go to.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Well, I'm interested in seeing if we could raise some of the scores. I know that particularly there were in the two high schools behind a little bit. I feel like there's possibly, this is another thing that some folks were telling me when I was out there in the community talking to them, that adding foreign language at an earlier grade, younger age, that there's a lot of studies that show that that increases cognitive scores. I also mentioned earlier about the exit interviews for teachers. I think that's something that would be nice to see that happen. And then also I wanted to take steps to rebuild those schools' fund balance. It's dropped from 5.2 million to 1.3 million since 2002 and I think that's too low.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett. If elected, what would be the first three actions you would take as a school board?
The first thing I would like to do is see what we can back up money to pay our teachers and to keep them in our county and not lose them to other counties that weren't able to get more money. The second thing I would do would see that our kids that are in school get the best quality of education. Plus, some of our kids that come to schools, they don't, when they go home, they don't have food on the table or anything. So I'd like to see some way to fix that problem to help these kids. I know it's been done in other schools in other states and everything. And the third thing I would like to do that I've seen done is we have a lot of special needs kids that go to our school and a lot of times they get lost in the crack and they don't get to do things that normal children get to do. But we've opened some programs for these kids where they can be part of the sports activities and different other things in the school system. And I would like to see that continue.
Thank you. Ms. Benhart.
Well, I have visited most of schools recently and read the school report cards, the ones I could read, North Carolina report cards. There's one There's one in our middle school, if you can find your way through it. So I like to improve the websites so that they're easily accessible for people that aren't that good in technology, the parents, so they can understand what's going on in the schools, can find the information they want easier. The YouTube website is pretty good, but it's not that easy too to find the particular workstation you wanna see. I know, according to some of the teachers and parents I've talked to, they really look like increased technology in the schools, and we're low on that, especially at Tuscola. So those are things that I would wanna do.
Thank you. Mr. Francis?
Probably the first three things I would work on in, first of all, being, making sure that children are staying on grade level. And in addition to that, working with our community college, ACC, to offer some more advanced classes for AP and your honors classes. Additional collaboration with 22 high schools, bringing them into the Haywood Community College for those class offerings. Also along those same lines, is making sure that we're serving all the children's needs. Like Ms. Perez said, we have lots of special needs kids in our program, and making sure that they are taken care of, and we have everything accessible for them. And create, work on our scholarship program. We gave out over $9 million in scholarships. Our graduating teams had, had opportunities for $9 million in scholarships, and I'd like to see that grow. We work on our graduation rates. Yeah, that's something that we also need. That we're above average on Tuscola, FISCA, and State, but we still need to work on this. The second thing is listen to our teachers, begin working on the supplement, and find out what, you know, the morale, if there is poor morale, what we need to do to improve that. And then the third thing, we'll be working on our budget. And, you know, we've discussed it all night about how our funding has been lacking in certain areas, and being more creative, taking outside the box to look at those areas where we may be overfunding some areas and underfunding others. So those would be the three items that I would like to continue to work on.
Thank you. We reached a point for closing remarks, and we'll start with you, Ms. Inhardt.
A thank you to the Mountaineers for hosting this forum, and to each of you for choosing to be involved. Whether we have children in school or not, we are stakeholders in the public school system. Our future workforce, our economic vitality and sustainability depend on the educational decisions that we make now. I'm Kay Miller, and I'm running for Haywood County School Board because I want to increase communication between the board and the community it serves. I want to improve teacher morale. I want to rebuild the fund balance. The emergency funding for the school system is too low. I think I have some experience that particularly qualifies me for the position. After earning my MBA from Texas Christian University, I held the position of Director of Administration for the St. Louis Symphony Community Music School in Missouri. I oversaw the daily operations of seven school branches, 4,000 students, 14 staff, and 90 faculty members. I was also in charge of scholarships, financial aid, and registration. In 2004, I was hired as Executive Director of the Haywood County Arts Council, a position I held for over eight and a half years. During that time, I developed a working relationship with Dr. Garrett, Dr. Douglas, Terry Wood, some teachers and principals to bring art, poetry, and music residencies, and live orchestra and dance performances to Haywood County schoolchildren. Here's something I know that we can do together. We can work together as a community to find local solutions for our unique educational challenges. I was raised in the foothills of South Carolina, where I was taught the same mountain values, love of God, love of country and family, hard work, and sense of community. Along with those mountain values, I'll bring a new perspective to the Haywood County School Board. Thank you all for coming. Remember, early voting starts Thursday, October 20th. And whether you're voting early, early or on Election Day, I'm asking November 8th for you to vote Kay Miller.
Well, I would like for you to be elected to play against the board because I started out on the board, and I know the struggles that we have in our system now of the different people that we keep talking about. You know, I know some of the teachers that have left our county to go to other counties. And I would like to work hard and see that our students get the best education afforded them, and the best teachers to give them that education. I would like to see more of them with special needs, because that is my heart, because I have a child with special needs, and I am very honored to see that they do have things now that include the special needs kids and not exclusive from other, you know, things in school. I would like to work hard and find harder for them to have more things that they can do in the school system. And I'd like to see that all of our kids in Haywood County get the best possible education available to them. So I would like for everybody to remain, to vote. And I would appreciate everything that the citizens of Haywood County, their faithful community, mean to be on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Inhardt?
Yes, I would like to use my time to bring out a situation, a problem that I've had so many parents bring to me. Due to, well, this, and teachers, due to funding cuts, teachers are spending hundreds of dollars out of their pocket for classroom necessities. We've gotta solve that problem. In addition, there's a lot of confusion. Parents are confused about supplies. The school board put out a letter requiring all students in the 6th grade to buy a $127 calculator. However, our middle, one middle school had only a $15 calculator on their list. Another middle school had a, this was a $15 list, and then we had a $10 calculator on another middle school. So the school board set it up last into college. The odds are, if it's not broken, lost, or stolen, rapidly changing technology will make it obsolete. While most high school students could miss it from a $127 calculator, it doesn't make sense for an 11-year-old, and many parents can't afford it. So we have to think of those parents. We have many students, 400 homeless children. We have many, many students who are in the poverty situation, free lunch situation, and they can't afford expensive things. We're supposed to have a free public education. I belong to the Leadership Council, 35 years as a Girl Scout leader and director, been a substitute teacher, who knows what else. Anyway, school volunteer and ATA resident. Lastly, due to our fantastic teachers and hardworking students, Haywood County is number 11 in the state. I want to give the schools what they need, because we can be number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francis?
Again, I'd like to thank the Mountaineers for having us here. I'd like to start off by saying how honored and humbled I have been in serving the children and teachers of Haywood County through the last five years, as well as representing the people of Haywood County in this position. I'm a proud 5th generation native of Haywood County. I'm deeply proud to be a product of our Haywood County schools. I come from a long line of educators. My father, grandfather was a teacher and principal here in Haywood County. My mother, sister, and maybe my relatives are teachers in Haywood County. Teaching and education is literally in my blood. I am married to my beautiful wife Heather, which will be celebrating our 16th anniversary at the end of this month. My greatest accomplishments are about two wonderful girls, which I believe are in the background of the Canyon Valley. Caitlin, 12, and Callie, or Caitlin is 12, and she attends, she's a 6th grader, comes to our school. And Callie is 7, 2nd grade, which she wants to go in here. And they are one of the reasons that I have a vested interest in being on the school board. I'm a graduate of Appalachian State University with a degree in Management Finance, and I'm currently a state lobbying representative for Southern Mutual Church Insurance. Besides providing insurance for churches, my county is very active in protecting the safety and welfare of children. I have done countless number of child protection seminars for regional churches and helped them set up safety procedures within their church. I'm an active member of First United Methodist Church of Waynesville, serving in the sermon on the leadership team, teaching youth southern school, and serving at the Bodleian Church. I am very passionate about our school system here in Haywood County. I want to continue to keep our students on grade level, and also I want to work on getting better funding for our teachers and employees, and see that our tax dollars are spent for the very best education we can possibly provide for our students. In the last four of the five years that I've been on the board, Haywood County has had the highest academic performance in the school districts history. We have three nationally ranked elementary schools, and all of our schools are on an A, B, or C grade level, no Bs or S. And I also mention, we are number 11 out of 115 LEAs in the state. I want to thank you for your consideration and your vote, and to serve for you on the school board for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Vicky, and the Mountaineers for doing the forum for us. And I just wanna say again that I grew up in this county. I went to Maggie, I went to Juluska, I went to Waynesville Junior High, as we called it then, and then Tuscola. I'm a vocational graduate. I graduated with a vocational degree right out of high school, and I went straight to work. And I'm a member of New Covenant Church and Clot. And I would just like to say that I am for the students. I'm for the advancement of the students. I am for the teacher retention. And I think as a community, that if we all take hands and we become a circle, we can do this together. We don't have to be on separate sides when we all come together. We're coming together for our teachers and for our students, and that's the most important thing.
Thank you. Let's give all of these candidates a clap. The district, there are actually three candidates, but Scott Smith had to work this evening at the mill and was unable to be with us. So while our group of candidates introduce themselves, starting with you, Ms. Clark.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Clark. I am a native of Haywood County. I have worked at Evergreen Park for 16 years.
Ms. Lance?
I was born in Billmore, baptized, and was confirmed across the street at All Souls Church, and eventually I'll be buried there sooner than it used to be. I worked for five years in Children's Protective Services in the Florida system before joining the North Carolina College System. We're in 1979, we're teaching every day since that time, up to this afternoon when I finally finish for the day. I've served on a lot of committees in Haywood County, including Governor Child Fatality Prevention Team, Guardian at Lida for 18 years, Heart of North Carolina in Raleigh, Camp Hope Commission, which I'm still on, Youth Services Advisory Committee, the Care Charter of the Word, and I know a lot of people from all of those committees over the past 35 years. I've also served in the United States Army, in the Reserve, and actually did components for 35 years, and finally retired in 2008 as a senior medic with the Florida Champaign and Robben Desert.
Thank you. First question goes to you, Ms. Clark. Describe what you have done to prepare for this position.
Yes, I have been to several school board meetings and talked to several teachers. Actually, I have three teachers in my Sunday school class. I would go to church with Paul Edward, I spend a lot of time with him, talking about the issues and what to expect. I've also been up to date on all the school board meetings. I've watched all the videos. Also read all the articles in the paper of all the issues we've had for the last couple of years in school.
Thank you. Mr. Lance?
I've been studying for this job for 36 years. I read papers every single day from students who have been through our system. I've worked in Haywood College for 30 years. I've read for, for this job, I've gone back and reviewed the appropriate use of achievement tests in schools. I looked at all the research that is available that's going on nowadays, and as well as talk with neighbors, my dentist who gives me good advice, and others.
Thank you. The second question, we'll start with Mr. Lance. The school board voted to close Central Elementary School partly because of the current enrollment. There was some talk that another school, perhaps in the Beaverton District, would need to be closed next if the enrollment situation isn't turning around. What is your feelings about the central closure, and perhaps even another closure in your community?
My heart was broken when Central closed. I had no intention in it being on the school board until Central closed. When we're facing another school closure, it's time to panic. I think we need to stop the bleeding. We've lost, I was just talking with Mr. Francis, 22 to 24 teachers to Bunkin County and other states. And there's a great deal of talk about tax money, and now we can't, we can't tax people. We're, we're changing democracy, folks. I mean, the demographic people are moving in here. They've retired, they have no children, they have no interest in the school system, and so that's what we're facing. What happened to the lottery? We were supposed to have that on top of all of the other things, and all of a sudden, the lottery's cut down. We have to protest what's happening to us in Raleigh. And as soon as Shandamol is elected out of Monocora and get her going, we have been. Now, I'm kidding you about that, Mr. Francis. Again, we need to face the fact that we're facing an emergency right now. There are two ways of doing things. First of all, we have to have increased settlements, and they have to cover all kinds of places. We'll use our heads and do that at the committee. And number two, we need to initiate end-of-time scholarships to students who will contract to teach in Haywood County after they, they leave here and receive their teaching certificates in other places. That will ensure that we have them for around as many years if they take a scholarship, four, five, six years or so. That's the very first thing they need to do. There are other things that we messed up, and I'm sure we'll get to them in a minute.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Could you repeat the question?
I can. The school board voted to close Central Elementary partly because of the current enrollment. There's talk of another school closure unless the enrollment is turning around, and perhaps can, can happen next time. What is your opinion on those issues?
I agree with what Mr. Lance says. I hope that we don't go down that route. It's, I've known from talking to school board members, former school board members, that it is a possibility. The charter school has about three students right now, and they get fully ramped up, it's gonna have 572. I think the biggest issue for this county is jobs. We have people graduate from high school and go to college, and they never come back. There's nothing to come back to. We got the mill, a few places. We need jobs. And that's one of the main issues that come out, and Mr. Mead was, jobs, education. And as one of our candidates said, we have 400 homeless children. To me, that's our top three priority. We have jobs that's gonna help the tax base, that's gonna get, keep people here and maybe bring people down.
Thank you. The next question goes to you. What have you heard or read about our school system that most impressed or most disturbed you?
Well, I guess the most impressed, I guess I'm very proud that they made the top 10%. I was actually at the board meeting, and they were all very happy and celebrating that. So I was proud of that. I'm only a few years old. So I guess that's the one most impressed.
Okay. Ms. Lance?
This is great. We're in the top, the top 10%, that's 11, I think, and that's really great news. But, but it's important to remember that school assessment is completely different than student assessment. Our students, like many throughout the country, about 75% of them, in fact, are not adequately prepared to go do college work, which I'll teach every day, and I can see it every day. So let's talk, stop pretending that our students are ready for college work. SUNY State University of New York, for example, is preparing a college placement test for 11th graders in the country to determine remediation needs for college-bound students. Parents routinely must pay $20,000, $30,000, $40,000. (APPLAUSE). 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 (APPLAUSE).
Closing remarks, and we'll start with you, Mr. Clark. Two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go by my notes, but I'm not as good a talker as you might hear me. Again, my name's Ronnie Clark. I want to thank Big Mountain Air and everybody for being here. I agree, as Ron Camus said earlier, this shows that everybody cares, and I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk, and the opportunity to serve our county. I thank Mr. Lance. I want to say you were one of my teachers back in the eighties. You get you.
Very good.
I remember your classes at Sociological Psychology, and I remember them well, I enjoyed them, so thank you. I've been married 11 years to Rachel, I have four boys, John, Jeff, Matthew, Michael, three of which graduated at Isken, one is a senior now at Isken. I'm a native, like I said, from Haywood County. I've been working at the mill for 16 years for a membership manager. I have a associate degree in business administration at a community college and a bachelor's degree in organizational management at Maxwell University, which I completed online in 2010. I have coached and served the Camp Youth Football League for 12 years. All my boys played football. I was assistant coach at Camp Metal School with Heath Davis one year, and I have a coach in Haywood County wrestling, a little person here. I'm a member of the other, I was chair for my son's school, the wheelchair ramp ministry, and the roof project, we actually go and replace roofs on houses. I'm a disabled, I'm honorably discharged veteran of the United States Army Reserve, was a section leader and trainer for the heavy equipment section. I've always been heavily involved and was always educated and have active memory at the mill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lance.
I have the wonderful opportunity, and I have been able, thank you very much, it's, I thought I remembered you from the third row, one of your good students. I have the wonderful opportunity of reading people's papers every day from Jackson County as well as Haywood County and other students, and I see the impact that schools do or don't do for them. It's everything, it's our future. Just to see the changes that teachers have made, they'll talk about teachers that they've had in secondary school, it brings tears to my eyes, and that's why I've stuck with this for so long, I cannot give that up. But I am going to give it up. If you elect me to be school board, I'm going to retire in December so that I can make this a full-time job and advocate for all of the children of Haywood County, but especially, again, those elementary school children who so often get overlooked when there's time for allocating tax money. We need to change the school board so and the relationship with the county commission. The county commission gives us a bunch of money, and then we get to spend it. And then we can't go back to them. That has to change. That's 10 years ago kind of stuff. We have to be able to go back and renegotiate because our dynamics are changing in the school system every single day. We don't know what we're going to need, so we have to go back to the county commission. It has to start from there. We have to put the pressure on them, and as you say, I like what you say concerning, we'll do everything we possibly can to get every dime out of Raleigh that we possibly can. We'll depend upon the newspapers in order to get our story out. We won't take no for an answer any longer. It's too late for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you both, and let's go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Tessa Sellers. I'm a current district court judge here in the 30th Judicial District. It has been a honor and privilege to serve the good people of the 30th Judicial District for the last two and a half years. I have been appointed, this is my first election, I have opposition, and I look forward to answering the questions and moving forward with the rest of the fore and after.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Thank you. I appreciate you, the opportunity to address this tonight. My name is Kim Carpenter. I am running for district court judge. I have practiced law in this district for 20 years, 20 years since past September. Swain County, lifelong resident, have three wonderful children, and I'm looking forward to the remaining part of the fore. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Sellers, the first question goes to you. Why are you seeking this position?
Well, I'm currently a district court judge. I had the opportunity in practice to have a wide range of practice where I had the opportunity to be appointed to the bench by the governor about two and a half years ago. At that point in time, I had to go for a local bar for a bar vote in which I was humbled by the support of my other colleagues with receiving the top votes for my name to be submitted to the governor's office for appointment, as well as five other candidates. So I sought this position for the appointed seat, and then after that, of course, I want to continue to serve the people of the 30th Judicial District. I've had a lot of experience in each area of our practice of law, as Judge Leslie said earlier, district court is the everything court. I call it the equals court. It's a court in which most people, if you're going to have some contact with the court system, is gonna be in that particular court, and I feel I'm most qualified for that position.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Same question. Okay. I do believe I'm the person that's most qualified for this position. I'm seeking the position because I have practiced law in this district for 20 years. I have practiced, my main office has been in, still in North Carolina, but I have practiced law throughout the district. I have had a vast, wide-based practice. I have practiced family court, juvenile court, represented people in criminal matters. I have represented people in medical practice cases and personal injury. Every case that would come before a district court, I have practiced. I've stood in the position of attorneys representing clients, hundreds of thousands, hundreds of clients, thousands of clients in those positions. I've also been the county attorney for Swain County for the past 18 years. I've represented Swain County in every aspect of county government, and based upon my wide range of experience over the past 20 years, I'm seeking the position of district court judge. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. The next question goes to you first, Ms. Carpenter. Do you see any issues in the court system you would be able to change as a district judge?
Well, you know, I've been practicing for 20 years, there's always ways to make, I believe, the court system be more efficient for everyone. I believe that there's innovative ideas and ways that can come about that we can learn from the past. In doing that, though, we have to balance out the main focus and objectives of the court system, which is to provide equal access to justice to all people, is to be fair and impartial, is to have independence and decision-making by the judges. So I think that there are efficiency issues that can be improved, and I think it just takes, gonna take time in going through and learning those processes. And I think that I'm, based upon my 20 years of practicing in this area, I think that I can do that very well, and I plan on doing that when elected.
Thank you. Tessa Sellers.
Same question.
Well, since being sworn into office, or admitted sworn in as attorney, I have spent every day in the district court, in the superior courts of our district. I have to say that the 30th District is a wonderful place to practice law. The court system, as with everything else, there are improvements that can be managed. However, it takes a collaborative effort of everyone with the resources in which we have to do so. As a district court judge, when I put my robe on every day, I strive to do the best that I can and follow people along, very impartial, listening to each and every argument before the court to make those determinations. If there are things in which it becomes something in which we can be a part of to change the district court, then I think that that would be a way of communication with our particular bar in our bench, which we do. We practice in a wonderful district. The attorneys, the defense attorneys, your prosecutors, your judges, there is very communication, and I think that if there is something that is to be addressed, I think that we're at a position to do so.
Thank you. Tessa Sellers, your question for Ms. Carpenter.
I believe that Ms. Carpenter and I have agreed to just have each of us discuss our qualifications. So I'll allow her to do so.
Thank you. And this is, judicial races are a little bit different than most other races, where we can't discuss policy, we can't discuss particular cases that may come before us. So that's kind of the reason that we spoke ahead of time and thought this would be best. As I said earlier, I've had a wide range of legal experience over the past 20 years. I graduated from law school in 1996 in May. I started practicing law in September 1996. I have, since practicing law in this district, I have also served and currently serve on the Swain County Board of Education. And I know from that experience what it takes to have a community effort and how vital important education is for the children in order to make a safe and healthy society. And I think that the court system can work with every component of the, and should work with every component as a judge in the community to better the community, and that's what I plan on doing.
Thank you. Tessa Sellers.
I'm a former prosecutor. I was a prosecutor here in the 30th Judicial District. I worked in Clay County in Grant County. At least two of my five years in the district attorney's office, I worked in those three counties completely by myself, and win both district and Superior Court. I've had the opportunity in those years in the district attorney's office to try thousands of cases before judges and in jury trials. Being in the district attorney's office gave me the opportunity to have the opportunity to work to evaluate cases, to put the rules and ethics to practice, and to be in the courtroom five days a week. After leaving the district attorney's office, I put them up on practice. I had a very successful private practice where I had the defense work, family law work, child support, and criminal court matters. I had the opportunity in those years of practice to handle each and every part of jurisdiction that I had in the district courtroom each and every day that I worked. So I've built both sides of the dome to be in those positions and have the experience that was a well-rounded experience to give me the opportunity to be experienced on the bench. I have had a number of years of practice in which Ms. Carpenter has, but however, I think it's quality versus quantity as far as years, and I've had the opportunity to practice each and every one of those areas, which I believe makes me the best candidate for this position.
Thank you. Closing remarks, we'll start with you, Tessa Sellers.
So I'm Tessa Sellers. I'm a current district court judge. I'm a native of Clay County, where I live with my husband, Joe Jack, that is his god given name, he's not short for a native, and our two boys, Jackson and Rex, who are at the soccer game tonight, I hope that they're ready. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm not a native of Haywood County, but my heart goes out to the people of western North Carolina being from Clay County. I know several of you folks know where Clay County is because a lot of folks go to Lake City. I ask you and urge you for your vote to come over so that I can keep my seat as a district court judge, and I can tell you that I will do my very best to work my hardest for the folks in western North Carolina to continue to be fairly impartial here in each and every argument, come to court time, and take their battles time, and do the best job as a district court judge.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you. I do appreciate the opportunity to be here to let you know a little bit about who I am. As I said earlier, I'm a lifelong resident of Swain County. I have two children, they're both teenagers, who are in activities tonight as well. So I have, over the years of practice, have developed what I believe to be an idea of what a judge should be. And while we do have good judges in our system, I believe that what is imperative for a fair and impartial judicial system for everyone is for a judge to be consistent, a judge to be dedicated to the rule of law, to the judicial standards and ethics that's required by North Carolina, it's required by the US, and required by you citizens who come before us, who come before judges in this report. And I'm committed to being that judge who's committed to the rule of law, committed to the judicial ethics standards that are before me and required by me. I'm committed to being hardworking. I think I have a reputation in my practice of being a hard worker, and I'm committed to be dedicated, diligent, in listening to all the facts that come before me before I make a decision. I believe firmly that the law favors no one. I believe that everyone comes before our court system, and everything should be heard on a case-by-case basis without regard for who you are, who you know, if you have any political agendas. And I believe that everyone is entitled to equal access to justice. And that's why I want to be your next district court judge, and I'm committed to working hard for you in that way. And I thank you for your vote on number eight.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a hand.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank you to the Mountain Air for putting on this show. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. I am running against, but I am on the ballot nonetheless. My name is Monica Leslie. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the 30th Judicial District as a district court judge for the last 12 years. Being a district court judge is extremely interesting. District court, as you may hear from Judge Sellers and Ms. Carpenter in a few minutes, is really the everything court. We hear criminal cases, we hear everything involving children and families, all the way from custody to divorce to Department of Social Services cases, juvenile delinquency. We also do some jury trials and things like contract law and property disputes between people. So it's really, it's interesting, it's a lot of fun, and I appreciate that I've been able to serve the people of this district for this many years. I live in Waynesville, I have three children that attend the public schools here, so I'm very interested in the next group of candidates that are coming up. And again, I thank you for allowing me to serve, and even though I am not opposed, I still would very much appreciate your vote. Thank you. [applause]